Good morning and welcome to the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. At this time, if everybody could please find their seats, we are ready to begin. At this time, we ask if you could please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. When the hearing is going, we ask that nobody approaches the dais at any time. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Hello and welcome, everyone. My name is Tiffany Caban. My pronouns are she/her, and I am the Chair of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. Today, we are here for a hearing entitled Oversight Menstrual Equity in New York City: Update. In 2016, this council became the first U.S. city to pass comprehensive legislation to increase access to menstrual products. However, advocates have highlighted flaws in the implementation of the 2016 laws, and today, we are here to revisit these laws and highlight the potential shortcomings in implementation to ensure we address them adequately to meet the needs of people who menstruate in this city. Additionally, we will hear five pieces of legislation. Intro 1055 of 2023, sponsored by myself, is a local law to amend the admin code of the City of New York in relation to menstrual products, which, as I mentioned, I am proud to sponsor. Intro 1056 of 2023, which is a local law to amend the administrative code of the City of New York in relation to the provision of feminine hygiene products in schools sponsored by Councilmember De La Rosa. And three pieces of legislation sponsored by Councilmember Farias. 1057 of 23, a local law to amend the admin code of the City of New York in relation to requiring the Department of Corrections to report on its distribution of feminine hygiene products to female incarcerated individuals and female individuals arrested and detained in the custody of the department for at least 48 hours. Intro 1058 of 23, a local law to amend the admin code of the City of New York in relation to education on feminine hygiene products. And finally, intro 1059 of 23, a local law to amend the admin code of the City of New York in relation to including menstrual cups in the definition of feminine hygiene products and the provision of such products. And estimated 26% of the total population is of reproductive age, and most of these people will menstruate each month between two and seven days. Unfortunately, the stigma associated with menstruation continues to exist and is amplified by various socio-coach role factors. To combat these challenges, it is essential that people who menstruate have access to menstrual products. The average person who menstruates spends $9 per month -- I will say I spend more than that, for sure -- on period products, and in order to have a fully equitable and participatory society, we must have laws and policies that ensure menstrual products are safe and affordable and available for those who need them. According to a survey of 1,010 U.S. teens who menstruate between ages 13 to 19 commissioned by Thinks and Period, period poverty, or the inability to access menstrual hygiene, has jumped to nearly a quarter of all U.S. students, an increase from 1 in 5 in 2019. We will look at the legislation that has already taken into consideration some of these concerns, and we hope to hear from the administration and members of the public about the utility of these updates to the law. And before closing, I'd like to note for the record, in both my capacity as the Chair of this committee and co-chair of the LGBTQIA+ Caucus, that the 2016 legislation, pathbreaking as it was, contained language that we would seek to edit. Were we considering the legislation today? In 2023, this committee is determined to use gender expansive language that acknowledges that not every woman or girl menstruates, and not everyone who menstruates is a woman or girl. Throughout this hearing, let us keep trans, non-binary, intersex, and other gender expansive New Yorkers in our minds and hearts. And in closing, I'd like to thank my own staff, my Chief of Staff, Celia Castellan, my Comms Director, Jesse Meyerson, my Legislative Director, Madhuri Shukla, as well as our committee staff, new Committee Counsel Sahar Mozami, welcome, congrats. And Senior Legislative Policy Analyst, Kristi Dwyer, for their work on this hearing. I'm going to acknowledge the councilmembers that are present, which is Councilmembers Gutierrez, Farias, and Carmen De La Rosa, and I am going to invite my colleagues to give opening remarks. Councilmember De La Rosa. You good? Okay. Councilmember Farias.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'm Councilmember Amanda Farias, and I'm proud to be attending today's hearing to discuss five of the 10 bills in the Women's Caucus Menstrual Equity Bill Package. This bill package, led by myself, Women's Caucus Co-Chair Lewis, Chair Caban, and several members of the Women's Caucus, serve as an important recommitment to menstrual equity in a time when states across the nation tried to ban even saying the word "period." The majority of this body, and likely this room, as I'm looking around, has personally experienced how inaccessible period products are throughout our city. This is an issue of public health and equity that continually needs to be addressed and adapted. Women know talking about menstruation as a young person is limited, and the only time we're really talking about access to it is when we're asking someone in a restroom, workplace, or school if they have one to share. We in the council are working diligently to present a package of bills to continue remedying that historical neglect. Menstrual equity is centered on removing barriers to access and removing the long ingrained stigma surrounding our periods, who uses them, and how available they are to us. Thank you to my colleague, Chair Caban, for your leadership in holding today's hearing, and to the dedicated sponsors of this package, Speaker Adrian Adams, Councilmembers De La Rosa, Brooks Power, Stevens, Menon Hudson, Abreu, and Public Advocate Williams. Finally, thank you to the supermajority of my colleagues, the 35-plus sponsors of these bipartisan bills, for reinstating our city's commitment to public health, basic people's needs, and to hopefully soon put an end to the stigma women, young girls, men, and gender non-binary folks experience every month while on their period. As the prime sponsor on introductions, 1057, requiring the Department of Corrections to report on its distribution of menstrual products, 1058, requiring the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to create written materials containing information on menstrual products, including a description of each, information on how to use each product, any health risks associated with each product, and 1059, which would expand the definition of menstrual products to include menstrual cups in local law. And as the co-prime sponsor of intros 1055 and 1056, I look forward to working with all of my colleagues and agency partners to make these critical pieces of legislation a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to acknowledge that Councilmember Riley has joined us, and I will turn it over to the Committee Counsel to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair. Just a reminder, for those wishing to testify in person, please see the Sergeant-at-Arms in the back of the hearing room to fill out a testimony card. For those testifying via Zoom, your name will be called, and you will be prompted to unmute. All those who wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. We will now hear testimony from members of the administration. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to the councilmember questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning, Chair Caban, and members of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. My name is Melanie Weniger, and I am the Deputy Executive Director for Policy and Programs at the New York City Commission on Gender Equity, or CGE. CGE works to advance gender equitable policies, practices, and programming within New York City government and across the city at large. In this role, I lead the team that monitors policy and legislation, develops and implements programming, and conducts research related to our three areas of focus: economic mobility and opportunity, health and reproductive justice, and safety. In particular, our office focuses on the needs of and inequities faced by women, girls, transgender, intersex, and gender expansive New Yorkers using an intersectional lens and a human rights framework. CGE sits within the Mayor's Office of Equity, the city's first centralized equity office, which the Adams Administration launched last year. MOE works to foster a fairer, more equitable city through policies, practices, and programs across the city's agencies and systems. I am joined today by Roman Goffman, Citywide Chief Procurement Officer from the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, DCAS; Kat Thompson, Chief of Staff; and Chelsea Chard, Senior Policy Advisor, both from the Department of Correction, DOC; and Despina Zaharakas, Senior Executive Director of the Office of School Wellness Programs; and John Shea, Chief Executive Officer of the Department of School Facilities, both from New York City Public Schools, NYCPS, to answer your questions. The Adams Administration is committed to gender equity and meeting the health needs of women, girls, and gender expansive people. Earlier this year, the mayor announced his plan to develop New York City's first-ever Women's Agenda and hosted a Women's Health Summit at Hunter College to focus on dismantling decades of systemic inequities that lead to racial disparities and health outcomes. The administration has also worked to protect access to reproductive health care, abortion, and gender-affirming care in New York City through executive orders and initiatives like the Abortion Access Hub. Menstrual equity laws and policies are geared towards ensuring that menstrual products are safe, affordable, and available to those who need them. Menstrual inequity disproportionately affects marginalized girls, women, and trans and gender expansive people who experience poverty, housing insecurity, are justice-involved, or in the child welfare system. New York City led the charge toward menstrual equity in 2016 by codifying Local Laws 82, 83, and 84 to ensure that products are available at no cost to students in grades 6 through 12 in public and charter schools, people served by homeless shelters, and people who are incarcerated. Many other cities and states, including New York, have since passed or proposed dozens of laws that aim to provide menstrual products in certain locations or to certain populations, and to repeal taxes on period products. New York City's menstrual equity laws have allowed more menstruating people to access products and manage their cycle in a dignified and comfortable way. In the school setting, menstrual products, specifically pads and tampons, are available for free in dispensers in girls' and single occupancy restrooms in all public and charter school buildings with grades 6 and up. Custodial staff are responsible for monitoring the restrooms and restocking products as needed. NYCPS recently announced that this program has been expanded to school buildings with grades 4 and 5 in recognition of the fact that some younger students also menstruate, and dispensers for pads were installed in single occupancy bathrooms in these schools in advance of the new school year. Menstrual products are also provided in shelters, including domestic violence shelters, single adult shelters, family shelters, and HIV/AIDS services housing. Clients have multiple opportunities and areas where they can access menstrual products. Based upon the shelter operations, products are left in easily accessible locations such as the front desk or shared pantries. Certain shelters distribute additional products during outreach events. Case managers in all shelters are available to clients for questions about the resources available to them, including menstrual products, and clients receive packets with this information during intake. Menstrual products, both pads and tampons, are also available at the Rose M. Singer Center on Rikers Island to people in city custody. Products are either freely available or available by request, depending on the housing area. Menstrual products are also available to people in DOC facilities within courthouses, both post-arrangement and for those who have a court appearance. Individual agencies purchase menstrual products for their respective clients, though some agencies receive donations of menstrual products that they then distribute to clients. DCAS maintains a supply of pads in its warehouse that agencies can request and access if needed. CGE leads the Menstrual Equity Work Group as part of our Health and Reproductive Justice portfolio. The Work Group has been active since late 2021 to support the implementation of the local laws and to address any existing or future gaps in implementation. Work Group members include DCAS, NYCPS, DOC, Department of Homeless Services, Department of Social Services, and the Human Resource Administration, Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, and other agencies with a role to play in achieving menstrual equity. We use an expansive definition of gender and recognize that not all women menstruate, and that trans men and gender expansive people may also experience periods. Together, the Work Group has conducted research and worked across agency partners to better understand menstrual product procurement and distribution policies and practices. The Work Group is also collaborating to develop policy interventions to better understand client needs and preferences and improve implementation where necessary. For example, we are working with NYCPS to explore different avenues to get student feedback on menstrual products and access. We are also working with NYCPS to develop materials for students about menstruation and their rights to access products, which could potentially be leveraged by other agencies. We are also collaborating with agencies to explore opportunities to increase the variety of products offered to clients in certain settings. In addition, we are partnering with the Office of Labor Relations on programming related to menstruation and menopause for city workers. We will continue to work together to develop policy and programming around menstrual equity for New Yorkers. The administration appreciates the intent of the legislative package and looks forward to discussing these bills further with council. We have a few comments on the bills within the package. So for intro 1055, this bill would require NYCPS to produce an annual report on the provision of menstrual products to students. It would also require that the city use the term "menstrual products" in all laws, documents, and materials rather than feminine hygiene products. The administration supports the use of the gender-neutral term "menstrual products." The administration also recognizes the importance of increasing product access to students and is happy to discuss our shared goals further with council. On intro 1056, this bill would expand the schools in which NYCPS is required to provide menstrual products to grades 4 to 12. The administration has already taken steps to expand product access to schools with grades 4 and 5, as dispensers for pads have been installed in single occupancy restrooms in NYCPS schools. On intro 1057, this bill would require DOC to produce an annual report on the provision of menstrual products to incarcerated individuals. The administration has concerns about requirements to track and report the use of menstrual products on an individualized basis. We would like to talk with council further about the goals of this legislation and other options to meet that intent. Intro 1058, this bill would require DOHMH to create written materials with information regarding menstrual products and provide the written materials to NYCPS for dissemination to students in grades 6 to 12. The Office of School Wellness Programs already disseminates a brochure called "Period Facts" to schools. This information is circulated to principals, and schools can request these brochures for their students. As mentioned earlier in the testimony, the Menstrual Equity Work Group is working on developing more materials for students on these issues. On intro 1059, this bill would add menstrual cups to the definition of feminine hygiene products and require these products to be distributed. The administration recognizes that menstrual cups can be a sustainable alternative to disposable tampons and pads, but acknowledged that there may be health and safety concerns in distributing these products in a broad array of settings. We would like to discuss this bill further with council. The Adams Administration recognizes that access to period products, particularly for vulnerable New Yorkers, is a vital step toward gender equity. We look forward to working with the council to improve conditions for menstruating New Yorkers so that they can move through the world with dignity. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this important subject today. We look forward to your questions and to continuing to work together to advance menstrual equity in New York City.
Thank you. So to begin, I have a series of questions that I think I'd love for each agency present to address. So maybe we go agency by agency, but there's going to be a little bit of repetition here. Starting just from the most general place, I know it was mentioned in the testimony, but I'd like to hear what types of menstrual products are currently being provided, and what are the biggest challenges to the provision of those menstrual products in your respective agencies? And I guess we could start with one agency. I'll go through all the questions, and then we'll move on to the next.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start for Department of Citywide Administration Services. So under Local Law 83, we were only required to store and supply sanitary napkins on behalf of the city. So DCAS itself does not store these type of items for the agency's use, but it's available for other agencies' distribution.
Okay, so to be clear, if somebody calls up DCAS, the only thing available to them would be pads, not tampons?
Correct.
Okay. And have y'all had an internal discussion about adding tampons and other products to be available?
So we haven't started -- we have internal discussions overall on the type of products available. If a requirement for DCAS to store and supply these products is made clear, we would procure as needed. Agencies do have the ability to buy these products themselves directly from the Preferred Source Program of New York State. I believe that's what's happening currently, but if DCAS is required to store it for distribution, we will be able to do that.
Okay, so if they request from DCAS, they get the pads for free, or is that what you're saying, and then if they want tampons, they have to purchase from a vendor?
So it isn't free from DCAS, so we have central storehouse catalogs for a variety of commodities, including sanitary napkins. We purchase it on behalf of the city, and then if an agency requires us to distribute it to them, they reimburse us for the cost that we paid.
And this might end up being a question for other folks, but if I'm looking at the approved vendors for the city, and I'm looking at tampons and pads, right, and then I look to you guys, is the price that you guys have for the pads lower than what's available through the vendors?
It depends. Pricing is different across the city because it's different specifications of the type of pads that agencies are requiring. So under our specifications that we procured in 2016, the pad prices that we've got are current, and we negotiate time and time. It depends on volume that we purchase on behalf of the city, but that could be different across the agencies based on their needs for their client base.
Yeah, and I do know that the quality of items differs across agencies, so I'm sure that we'll touch on that today. Could you also talk to me a little bit about distribution, how your agency provides guidance to your staff, you know, whom, where, and when to provide access to these products? Does your agency monitor and/or enforce the proper distribution at each agency? Is there a way for the particular population served by your agency to relate issues with the distribution and quality, like a systematized way to do that? Yeah?
So DCAS doesn't have authority to oversee the distribution directly to the client base. We do it to the agency specifically.
Yeah.
We do have an online catalog for a variety of commodities for regular city operations. We do have communications with the purchasing departments of each agencies to understand what's on our catalog and what the timeframe is for turnaround for us to deliver, but we do not oversee where it goes after the agencies purchase it for themselves.
And you touched on this a little bit, but you said that you negotiate pricing based on different places. How was the decision made to purchase, in addition to price, the product that your agency distributes, which is just pads?
So since DCAS is not the matter expert in this item, along with any other item, we really work with our either sponsoring agencies or partnering agencies to draft up specifications of what they would like to see for us to carry. So this was done back in 2016, but we could have further conversations if need be if we want to change specifications around what we're providing to city agencies, or even to increase the catalog that we provide.
Well, can you elaborate on what considerations were made in determining the quality of the products that y'all acquire?
I personally can't. Back in 2016, the partner agency that sent us the specifications, they would have made the determination. It wouldn't have been in-house in DCAS. I could follow up to see where it came from and who made the determination back then, but as of now, I don't have that answer.
Yeah, I'd love to get the information on what kinds of conversations are being had about what things are considered before deciding on what product to purchase. I'm assuming then you couldn't speak to the considerations that were made in determining the size of the project, the products that are made available? Do you have multiple, like, sizes and types available?
I believe we do, but I could follow up and send everything that we have on our catalog.
Okay. And can you also send a copy of the catalog to us? And how do you ensure equitable distribution of these products, or is it just like first come, first served by agency?
So we have a large amount, and we restock based on a rolling period of what we're required to have, but we have stock always available for agencies that need it. We ensure that we have enough stock based on previous distribution, that we have a fiscal year worth of stock, and then at the end of the fiscal year, we restock the items that are needed.
And what does a fiscal year worth of stock look like?
It varies by fiscal year, and also because of the last three years due to pandemic, but typically, there's about 3,000 -- it's an average around of 3,000 cases that is distributed per fiscal year, and then we ensure that we have that on hand always available.
And has your work at the agency been impacted by the pandemic?
In terms of, for this specific product?
I mean, just in terms of need, distribution?
So during the pandemic, the central storehouse was open and operating. We focused a little bit more on COVID personal protective equipment and things of that nature. I think there was an impact in certain products where, since agencies weren't in the office, that they weren't ordering as much, whether it's this product or cleaning supplies, things of that nature. So we did switch gears during COVID to focus more on PPEs, but operations was 24 hours a day.
How does the distribution of menstrual products to the various agencies currently work? Like, do you deliver it, or do they have to pick up their allotment?
We deliver.
Okay.
So we get a requisition in our system, the amount of cases, the locations I need to deliver, and I believe within 24 hours, we would have our trucks out there to deliver it to those specific agencies.
And I mean, in addition to the agencies that are present here, what other agencies are participating in the distribution?
So for fiscal year '23, we had not large distribution, but we had distributions to the District Attorney's Office of Kings County, Department of Transportation, Department of Homeless Services is one of our biggest clients, Administrative Children's Services, and the New York Police Department.
Now, another question I have is that when you do those distributions, do you know if those menstrual products are going to employees and clients, assuming that it's an agency that has a client base or just employees? Do you happen to know?
For DCAS, in the Office of Citywide Procurement, we don't focus on the program where it's going. We deal mostly with the purchasing or facilities department and just get them the products that they're requesting.
Fair enough. How do you account for feedback on the quality of products? Like, I know that you said that there are conversations that happen, but I'm still wondering, kind of, is it in a survey format? Are you collecting the data?
So for citywide procurement overall, not just general to this product, we have open line of communication with all agencies for anything we procure on their behalf. If there is any type of feedback that is required for us to take action on towards the vendor, they would come to us. If it's just general, you know, to understand if people are liking the product or things of that nature, that's not something in our purview.
Okay, thank you. I'd love to be able to move over to DOC. I have a few questions, and I imagine that Councilmember Farias will also have questions, so I'll pass it to her afterwards. So what type of products are currently being provided, and what are the biggest challenges to the provision of those products in our jail system?
Good morning. Kat Thompson, Chief of Staff with Department of Correction. Great question. So what we're currently offering readily available, we've got always size 5 heavy pads, we've got always size 2 regular pads, we've got TamPax tampons. Those are available in our housing areas, in the A-stations, as well as at intake and in our court commands. There's also commissary. You can purchase -- people in custody can purchase Playtex tampons, unsented regular 40-count, as well as TamPax tampons, regular 10-count, as well as Stayfree maxi pads 10-counts through our commissary system.
Okay, so in terms of, obviously, they're available in the housing areas, what are some of the reasons why somebody might opt to buy those products through commissary?
We don't collect data necessarily on why people choose to purchase, but they are readily available in those housing areas and in their buckets in the intake, and very much available. So the actual reason why someone would choose to purchase currently is not something that I have information on at this point.
And if DOC is making menstrual products readily available for free on demand, what's the need to have them for purchase at commissary?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we do have tampons at commissary currently. They were temporarily not readily available, but they're now back in and available. So I think that's part of why tampons have been ordered through commissary of late in the last three years, but now the tampons are back available at Rosie's.
So when they're not available, when the city is not providing a free provision of tampons, then folks who are incarcerated have to purchase them?
That was available through commissary, correct. Now, there's security--
No, but I just want, in terms of my --
Yes.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly. Is that correct?
So say your question one more time.
If tampons are not, for whatever reason, at a given moment, readily available for free provision in a housing area, and an incarcerated person needs them, they then have to buy them from commissary, correct?
If they're available through commissary, and the history of tampon availability has been subject to security-- has been subject to security, you know, availability. So at the current time, tampons are available both readily available in the housing areas as well as through commissary.
But you did mention that there was a period of time where they were not available for free, and the option was to purchase through commissary?
The option became available, I believe, in 2022. I have to come back to you the exact date at which they were available through commissary, but not readily available through the housing areas. So we are rectifying that now and appreciate an opportunity to talk about it here. So tampons are now available in the housing areas just as freely as they are with pads.
Okay, and when did that, and you said in 2022 is when that became a reality?
They were basically 2021 and '22 and 2023, the availability of tampons was no longer in the housing areas, but starting in what looks like 2022, they're available by commissary. So we'll get back to you the specific dates when tampons were now being sold through commissary.
Okay, and so how much do they cost in commissary?
In commissary, we have currently Playtex tampons, $15.60 for a 40-count, and Tampax tampons for a 10-count at $3.90.
And how much do those same products cost at a local Duane Reade or Walgreens or whatever?
I don't have that in front of me here, but certainly we can look it up and get back to you on that one.
What is the wage rate now for work done while incarcerated?
The wage is ranging anywhere between, I think around $55 to $1.55. There's three wage structures currently, so we can get the exact numbers. But it ranges from $0.55 an hour to $1.55 or $1.45 an hour.
Okay, so if a person who menstruates needs to buy tampons, they would have to possibly work 15 hours to afford one box of tampons? And that is not including maybe getting the extra calories that they need through commissary or other hygiene products or anything else that they might need to acquire through commissary that they can't get through the jail? Is that correct?
Now, remember, we do have pads available, and they've never not been available. So those are available. But with changes.
I just wonder if that's correct, if that's the right math?
You could do the math that way, certainly, yes. But there still are pads available.
Okay. So I mean, I have to say that I think that the wage doesn't reflect the need to have sufficient funds to cover the cost of what are necessary products. And I think the choice in product is incredibly important for folks and is a problem.
So just to address that, we are actually looking at the price that is charged currently, and I've asked personally that that be taken a look at and possibly brought down. If we can't bring it down to a better number, what we're going to do is just simply provide them for free. They are now for free available, so I agree with you, and it's something we're certainly working on right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a matter of, I mean, I'm sure Councilmember three will have more to say about this, but the fact that we have them in some of our, we have them downstairs in our bathroom, we have them, both options in our schools, and the fact that incarcerated people are being denied that option or have to work 15 hours to afford a box is pretty upsetting. Can you talk a little bit about, well, can you talk about some of the security concerns with tampons?
Sure. This is, you know, to the best of my understanding. So the security concerns with tampons and their removal from free distribution, starting in around 2021, were related to issues of contraband, secretion, as well as use of the string for, I think, lighting drugs potentially, and those are the security concerns. So that's why the pads were kept as the main option, right? The only option, really, and the two different sizes of pads in our facility.
Now, for secretion, couldn't an option be to purchase tampons that don't have applicators, like the paper or plastic applicators? Because there are like OB tampons, for example, that don't have an applicator that could be used and take care of that security concern.
Right, yeah. I don't have, I wasn't involved at the time when those decisions were made, but certainly good suggestions. So, and if you would like, we could take this offline and have a further discussion on some of those technicalities.
That would be great.
Yeah, no problem.
I have more questions, but I want to pass it over to Councilmember three.
Thank you so much, Chair. I'll just stay on DOC for now, and then I'll go to the other folks, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. So just really quickly, can you folks discuss the larger concerns that we have here? I'm hearing the contraband, the lighting, the secretion. Is, what are the concerns with tracking? And then are there any larger concerns around the access of and offerings of menstrual cups?
So from my perspective, concerns with tracking are that we're fully stocked, that they're readily available to our people in custody when needed, as needed, and no matter where they are. So they're definitely in intake now in large buckets, ready to go. They're in every cell and intake. They're in our housing areas, fully stocked, they should be. Our warehouse has about a quarter of a million tampons on hand, because we did have them previously, have a five-year shelf life with them. Those are delivered and stored at the facilities as well, at Rosie's. So they're in our storehouse as well as in our facility. We have no plans currently to make any procurement for tampons because we have enough at the moment. And same thing with pads, they're readily available. So in terms of, and we do know what we spend every year, we're happy to share those numbers with you, and Chelsea's got them.
Yeah, that would be great, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add that, as the Chief of Staff has said, women in the housing areas and in the intake areas, people in custody, whoever may need them, can freely access them. And in order to track specifically individually how many we're giving out to any one person who may need them, we would have to actually restrict the access that is available in order to, you know, count those products, track those products, and have people in custody ask for them specifically. So as they are now, how we've operationalized it, we don't want to have to be tracking, you know, how many menstrual products a person may be asking for and may be using at any one time, because we don't want to discourage them perhaps from taking those products freely in case, for whatever reason, you know, they feel nervous about asking for them, or they, you know, I can understand why, may feel uncomfortable with the department or some other agency tracking how many products they're using. So as it stands, we distribute them freely in a manner that would actually make us have to restrict them in order to track them sort of on that individualized basis.
And then in terms of, like, the massive purchase order that you've made and have a full stock of, how do we, you said five-year shelf life? Is there expiration date? How are folks monitoring that and tracking that, per se?
Our Executive Director of Warehouse, you know, took a look specifically in our prep for this, so he advised that we're within shelf life on everything we've got. And I'm assuming it's on the packaging. I don't have that answer for you right now.
Okay. I mean, in terms of, I think for me and for other folks, and we're trying to figure out, I mean, hearing from DCAST earlier of like how they order, where we have stock, where we don't, you know, understanding where the money is going and how it's used. I went on a tour recently of Rosie's. I appreciated that when we walked through, folks can just go and grab what they needed, when they needed it, whether they needed it or they were anticipating having to need it, whatever it was, the accessibility was there. But on the other, like governmental, like, you know, expense end of it, I guess I'm interested in seeing how we're managing that and how the city itself might be overpurchasing or not managing proper, like, use of or getting, you know, getting use of the products that we have in stock. Hearing a five-year shelf life as a woman is like, that's a lot of product to have, but I understand the focus that you folks have in terms of wanting to have it fully available. And then in terms of concerns around access to providing an option for menstrual cups?
Hey, sorry, red looked like it was off. Okay, so menstrual cups aren't currently offered. I think it would obviously require discussion through our security deputy commissioner, et cetera, team to look at the security concerns. Now, the one issue that is a concern is just the sanitation of. We don't have access to boiling water to sanitize these things in our housing areas for obvious reasons. If you want me to elaborate, I can. So that would be a reason why they probably wouldn't work in our setting, but I think we're open to having discussion and thinking of ways in which we could look at this. So it's something we can consider, but for now, the security and sanitation concerns are a reason why they're not available at this time.
Okay, I'd love to keep talking about that further, seeing if there's ways that we can use disposable cups and/or looking at the discharge or release planning process with DOC to see if the city can make it available. Then I think when we're looking at a cost-effective option, both internally within the agency and also when folks are leaving and re-entering our communities, it could be a great option. Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to try to do this quickly for the other folks. With DOH and for 1058 there with the Office of School Wellness, there, I wanted to know if this is policy to offer the brochures and period facts to schools, or is this currently mandated?
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Really happy to be here and having this conversation. The Office of School Wellness Programs is the Program Office for Health Education. So health education is where students are taught the knowledge and the skills to be able to take care of their well-being, and part of that well-being being menstrual equity. So they are taught about puberty, they're taught, starting in sixth grade and up, about the types of menstrual products available, their use, right? And then sort of having that knowledge, also being able to have the conversation with a health professional or a family member as to which of the products the students will use.
Sure.
In 2016, when we rolled out sort of menstrual products in schools in grades six through 12, our office worked with an organization called ETR to develop this period brochure. It has a lot of informations about puberty, it has information about product. We made it available to schools, and it's still available. So every year, we have a notice in our sort of weekly principal's digest, right, that says, hey, you know, make sure that, you know, we are implementing our products, menstrual products for our students who menstruate in schools, and here is a way for you to order additional brochure for your students. This was before my time, but what I, when I looked into it, it's a, we are, we need to update things. When we first produced that, we bought it from ETR, so it's not an in-house brochure, and it's only in English and Spanish, not in the DOE languages. So the, our members sit on the Menstrual Equity Work Group, they sit on the Sex Ed Task Force, they work with the Commission on Gender Equity. So the task, the task for creating updated materials focusing on menstrual equity will be developed at the Menstrual Equity Work Group with members of all agencies and multiple DOE offices represented. So that's planned. And our health team is also thinking about how to boost lessons in fourth and fifth grade that talk mostly about developmental sort of growth to really also include menstrual product information.
Sorry, so in every DOE school, this education is happening with the School of Wellness?
Health education is mandated by New York State every year in grades K through five, one semester or 54 hours. That can be one semester, it can be two periods a week, right, for a year. So mandated for 54 hours at the middle school level and 54 hours at the high school level. Our recommendation is that students get health education in sixth grade and eighth grade, and that's something that we really push for, although unfortunately, most students are getting it in eighth grade and 12th grade.
Sure.
So that's something we're working on.
Okay, and then, so I appreciate that you're saying that they're going to, you're looking to update the materials, and it's clear that regardless of this working group functioning, for however long it's been functioning, we have not updated it in the DOE languages, and now this is sparking to update it in the DOE languages. That's great. I'm looking forward to seeing all of those materials. How frequently are principals asking for these period products or period fact sheets for the schools?
So the last notice, or the notice for this year went out on August 29th, announcing the expansion to grades four and five, and also reminding principals to ask for brochures. As of Friday last week, I believe 11 schools had reached out and asked.
11 out of the entire city?
Sorry?
11 out of the entire city?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not doing a great job there. We got to be able to, so I guess this goes back to my question. Is this policy to create these fact sheets or is it mandated? It's been mandated since 2016?
No, it was not mandated. We wanted to support the educational piece of the rollout.
Okay, great, so it's just internal policy to do this because it's part of growing up and development, and we want students. So it sounds like a law to mandate it is probably extremely necessary, especially if we need to have access to the languages. If not, you know, we can get a different administration or a different council, means people can change priorities, and then this can be wiped away overnight.
Got it. I think it's something that, sorry, we're committed to.
For sure.
And, you know, for, there's a re-energy sort of around making sure that our students have the information they need around menstruation for all students who menstruate. I think that expanding into fourth and fifth grade charged it up a little bit, and I think the Menstrual Equity Task Workforce, Work Group is also really focused on this. So there's a re-energy, re-energy, re-energy around this topic. Also, I know that folks ask, well, how do students know? And we sort of had left that at the local school level, right? Principals informing students, and the students can see the dispensers in the restrooms. We know that that is also an area that we need to sort of push a little bit, so we are creating a flyer that will be available in all languages, and principals will be able to print and post that informs students that there are free products and where they are available.
Yeah, I mean, that was actually going to be my final question. Every single time I visit a school in my district, I ask to go into one of the bathrooms, particularly the, you know, girls' bathrooms, and there are always empty pads and tampons dispensers. I read in testimony that the custodians are supposed to be in charge of restocking, but if the custodians aren't doing it, and the students don't know where to go, or are still going to the nurse's office to request that, and clearly the nurses in our schools are not flagging, students are still coming to me, maybe the bathroom is empty. But what I mean, I've gone into every bathroom in the school that I've visited, and there's not a single menstrual product available. I mean, my question lies with, you know, how are we actually enforcing it and ensuring that principals understand that free accessible products are indeed mandated by law for our students, and it needs to be followed?
I'm sorry that that has been your experience, and I'm sorry the students in that school had to deal with that, right? I'll let John talk in terms of the distribution piece, but, you know, in my mind, I was a principal, and I had my school aides, and they were responsible for making sure that conditions were up to speed in the school. Bathrooms were stocked, hallways were clean, classrooms were clean, right? And they got my intel, and I met with a custodian weekly to make sure that we're on the same page and conditions were where they should be. And that's what we assumed was happening, but obviously, it's not. Like, if I were, if my dispensers were empty, that's the first thing I would do, reach out to my custodian engineer, say, what's going on here? And if I wasn't satisfied at that level, we have Deputy Director of Facilities that principals can always reach out to when there is an issue at the school level, and they'll be able to resolve it. That's sort of my school experience, my instructional piece, but John can speak to the distribution.
Yeah, and I do want to say, like, we know principals are doing all the things all day, so I get that, but I want to get in on how we're making sure that they're stocked.
Sure, and thank you for the question, Councilmember. Before I answer, I just wanted to express on behalf of Chancellor Banks his strong support for the menstrual equity efforts of the council, and we are happy here to answer your question, so thank you for having us in. I'll start by saying that if there are dispensed, custodian engineers have clear direction, that they are supposed to maintain stocks of all of these products at all times in their bathrooms. What you have described is unacceptable if there is an issue with dispensers not being stocked. As Desmond has said, there's an escalation process that starts with the school, but if that is not successful, then people can always escalate that beyond the school to my office, and we will ensure, and we have in the past, not just for this, but for other facilities-related issues. Anyone on the council can reach out to me in my office, and we will address those on a case-by-case basis. We need to know that information, and that is helpful to us if that's not happening. We appreciate that support.
For sure. Thank you so much, and thank you, Chair, for... For sure. Thank you so much and thank you Chair for the very generous amount of time.
Um, I'd like to pass it over to Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you, and I think, uh, Councilmember Farias did a great job asking some of the questions I had as well. But I did want to ask about those, um, students who are not yet in sixth grade. Um, I understand that there's an education component. But if one of those students does have a need during the school day for a menstrual hygiene product, what is the protocol right now at this moment?
Sorry. So, if the student does not have health education in sixth grade, um, they are not getting the, the product instruction uh, from their school. The products are available to the student, but questions about the product. And, and access to the product is free access, right? Students can go to the dispenser, pick it up. But information needs to come from family members, needs to come from questions to the nurse maybe, questions to a health professional. That's why we think it's key for students in sixth grade to have health education. Unfortunately, that's state requirement. It's anytime six through eight. But in all the trainings we do for health teachers and all our conversations with principals, it's sixth grade. We're really pushing sixth grade, eighth and ninth grade.
I hear you. Um, what I'm asking is if, if, you know, someone is menstruating and they need, they have an emergency and they need access and they're not in sixth grade, what is the protocol? Is then instruction administered to that child by a nurse? Or is the child kind of left on their own to figure out how to use the product?
I don't know what the protocol at the, at the school level because that would be considered sort of a health emergency, right? Um, I don't know if the protocol would be for the child to go to their homeroom teacher, the nurse, uh, call family, I don't know. There is no standard protocol that we have that, that is in place. But that's something that we can definitely think about and take a look at and pose to schools, right? Like, think about how are we guiding schools that are not providing health education to their students in sixth grade? But we'll have students who menstruate.
Absolutely. I think that that's important to have a plan and a protocol because especially if the bill that I'm sponsoring today passes, then, you know, that age goes down to fourth grade. And so, to have a, a child be put in a situation where they won't have anyone to instruct them or even have access to a product is important. I think that a procedure and a, and a protocol is needed. Um, and then the other question that I had was, how is accountability ensured? It seems to me from the line of questioning that both the Chair and, and, and the colleague had, there isn't sort of, uh, honed-in formula for who's accountable for kind of making sure that product is replaced and that is, is constantly available.
That would, John, do you know?
Uh, sure, uh, thank you for the question. And again, if the custodian engineers have been given clear direction to maintain these stocks. And if there was an issue at the school that that was not being done, that would generally start with the principal having a conversation with the custodian engineer. And if that was not successful, then it should be escalated up. And we will take care of those issues, but we, we need to know that. So, again, if you have
Okay.
schools in your district that you have issue specifics, uh, we would wanna know that.
And are all bathrooms going to be serviced? If, if the law passes, are all bathrooms going to be serviced? I know I've, I've visited schools where they have like a little kid bathroom and a bigger kid bathroom. As a mother of a very big nine-year-old, I know that there is flexibility in which bathrooms are used. But will all bathrooms service, be serviced?
So, currently, all single occupancy restrooms and all girls' restrooms in schools with children six through 12 have dispensers for both pads and tampons. And in fourth and fifth grade this summer, we're happy to report that we had rolled out, uh, pads in all of the single occupancy restrooms in school buildings with, uh, students, fourth and fifth grade.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much for your questions and I'm looking forward to continuing the dialogue.
Thank you. I just wanna ask a couple of follow-ups on, um, Carmen De La Rosa's, uh, questions. And then I'm gonna pass it to you, Jen. But, um, i- i- in one of the answers to the councilmember's, um, inquiry was around, you know, if, if a student is younger and starts to menstruate, um, where is that conversation happening because they're not getting health education? And one of the answers that was given is that it, it could be a conversation that is had with a nurse, that there's, you know, a, a need and could talk to a nurse, correct?
I, I'm having a little acoustic issue, so I'm just gonna ask my
If there's an issue with a younger student.
So, there are puberty lessons for grades four and five. And as I shared, uh, our health team is working to incorporate specific lessons on menstruation
Mm-hmm.
in grades four and five, now that products obviously are, are available.
But you had mentioned that if, um, if a student has a need and it's before they're getting that, uh, a kind of education, um, some of the places that they might get it is at home with their family or a school nurse, right?
That's my understanding, but each school is going to be different. I don't know if it's going to be, if a child goes to a guidance counselor, if a child goes to a teacher, I mean, a child would go to a trusted adult or a nurse?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a nurse would be a good option as a health professional. How many of our schools have a nurse?
I would need to get back to you on that.
But it's not all of them.
My understanding is that cer- schools with certain grades do, but I can't speak for, you know, but we can certainly get back to you on the number of schools that have a school nurse.
Okay, I mean, I, I'm pretty sure it's not all of them. Um, so, I, I, I think that's a, a problem in support and care. And then this was mentioned, I, I mean, do you agree that we should have protocols for, uh, a, a student that experiences like beginning their, their, um, their period like unexpectedly, that we should have protocols for that?
I would need to talk to my team about that and see what can be put in place and how to appropriately guide principals. Talk to the Office of School Health, you know, really have a conversation. But I can certainly start that conversation. And I think the Menstrual Equity Work Group would also be very happy to undertake thinking through what that could look like at the school.
I, I just think that my point is, is that it was just described as a health emergency. And this is not an emergency. It's something that happens to many of us on a cycle every month. Yeah, maybe we're off by a few days, whatever, whatever it might be. But this idea that we can't account for it seems a little bit absurd to me. I'm gonna be honest, and I, I do think that like from a, a health standpoint, schools have protocols for stomach aches, they have protocols for bloody noses. I, I don't understand why there isn't a set protocol um, for a, a person who starts their period. Um, so I, it, it would make sense to me that that would be something that the, the department should, um, should seriously consider doing or should do. Uh, I'm gonna hand it over to my colleague, um, Councilmember Gutierrez.
I, sorry, just, uh, if you, Chair, if I can. Um, I was just informed that all schools have a nurse. So.
All schools have a full-time nurse or supposed to have a nurse?
That's what I was informed.
There's not a single nurse vacancy and not a single school in our city?
I would not be able to respond to that. That's what I was told. I'm sharing with you, but I will certainly follow up. As I said, I would.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have a couple of questions for DOE and then DOCs. I'll start with DOE. Um, obviously, just also wanting to double down on what all of my colleagues have said. I also visit with my schools. I also, uh, will time to time even do a little, uh, pop-in with custodial staff, um, where they'll share with me their challenges that they have. And, you know, I'm going to start keeping count, but I can guarantee you, these dispensers are empty or either broken. And I think something that I would love to see you all work into the system is informing children of who they can notify, when it's broken or when it's out. That seems to be very, very unclear. And you can certainly understand why it's uncomfortable for a young student to like look for a custodian to be like, hey, we're missing pads and tampons in the girls' bathroom. So, um, that was something that's never been clear to me, so wanted to double down on that. Um, on the education piece, is that something that's accessible to all students? Or is it students and families who opt-in for, you know, uh, like, for the use of products, but the education piece is that for everybody?
Health education is mandated for all students.
But the piece about menstrual cycles, that is also included?
That's part of health education. There, there is no opt-out.
Wonderful. Um, I, I was a staff member during the pandemic and we got approached from many families who were concerned about um, the inability of other, of students to retain products, menstrual products, while they were running remotely. I know that it's still a challenge. Is there a system or a policy in place for, uh, students seeking to get products over the weekend or over holidays? Um, you know, essentially in some kind of bulk fashion if they're not trying to, you know, finagle one product at a time? Is there something in place at every school where they can do that?
I will let John, uh, speak to the, um, access and the nu- the, the numbers, right? Student, yep, John.
Uh, sure, thank you for the question. So, you mentioned during the pandemic, we did, uh, even though schools were closed, we had a number of our schools that were distribution sites for a variety of things, food in particular. Uh, but we also distributed menstrual products from existing stock to the community. Uh, we do not currently have a process for providing products to people outside of school hours, but we are happy to continue that conversation with the council and the, and the work group to, uh, to see what's possible.
So, a student right now on a Friday before a holiday weekend, can they go somewhere to pick up more than one product before they leave? I'm referring to students.
Sure. So, so my response to that would be that they are freely provided in the existing bathrooms in the school. Uh, they would be able to take what they needed from those dispensers.
But as we just shared with you, very, very seldom are these dispensers working. And, you know, again, this is not blanket, but they're not, but in that instance, where do they know where to go? Where do they go? Do they go to a nurse's office? Do they go to their homeroom teacher? Is there a place where they can go, um, in the event that they wanna walk out with 10 products and they don't wanna be seen by everybody? What, what is that system?
Sure, and, and that's a great question. And again, I would say that that's on a school-by-school basis where the, the school principal would manage who that escalation should be within their individual building.
Can I ask, this is from personal experience in my youth. I felt comfortable with a particular teacher. This particular teacher would give out, uh, menstrual products. Do teachers have a pathway to being reimbursed for the stuff that they provide to students? At their own will, at their own discretion, but do they have, uh, do they have that pathway?
Yeah, I am not aware of one, but we can certainly get back to you with, with the next
But do you, I can't be the only one. I think there are many teachers who are doing this for their students, providing this for their students. Has this ever been a topic of discussion?
I don't know about a topic of discussion, but to your point, I know our students, our teachers do provide for our students. When they see a need and, and we're not meeting that need, they do provide. I think there are avenues for teachers getting reimbursed for the money that they put out. But I would need to confirm whether a SIP, a small item purchase, uh, can be for all products or for some products, right? So, I can follow up on that question. But to your point about dispensers, I think now that we're developing, you know, the, the poster to inform students that pro- free products are available and where they are available, I think we need to double down both on the custodian end and the principal end to ensure that products being stocked is a priority for all schools. Because I've heard it and I, and I hear it and I don't, that's not the position we wanna be in. We don't wanna roll out a menstrual initiative, menstrual equity for thinking about our students who menstruate and be told that there are no products. So, we will double down on that with the publication of this flyer. And it will also be information for students. Like, here are free products for you. Students can then say, well, I don't have them, right? So, it'll be more informational, but also motivational. I think that we're gonna take that opportunity to really work together to make sure that both principals and, um, custodial engineers, but also everyone is supposed to be reading P-Digest, including superintendents and their teams, right? So, really making sure that we have that understanding across the system. Free products are available, period.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, thank you so much. My last question is for DOC. Um, in speaking with Councilmember Farias, I'm in full support of her bill. And I know that you mentioned some challenges about potentially sterilizing menstrual cups. Can you just describe for me, are there, um, incarcerated individuals who, who do use? Like, do, do, do you use menstrual cups or is it something that is banned?
They're, they're currently not available, so there should not be, there should not be.
Oh, so they're not even, they're not, they're not allowed to use them?
Yeah, that's correct.
At all. And is the piece about sterilization just the, the boiling aspect of the cup? Which to my understanding is not 100% necessary. It's just strongly advised.
Right, that would be a concern. So, it's something that we, I think we need to take a look at, right? And come to a conclusion on. We don't have that at the moment. So, but at this time, there's no cups available.
And is there any other challenges that you are debating?
Um, right now, um, I, I think the conversation with this administration hasn't happened in terms of cups that I'm aware of. So, I think it's, it's, uh, yet to be discussed.
Okay.
And Chelsea might have some additional.
I would just add that, you know, sort of what was, um, laid out in testimony is, you know, there are certain settings that it's challenging to, um, maintain the menstrual cups in a hygienic way. And so, there's not the boiling water available. And I think something we also have to consider for us is that most of the bathroom facilities that we have for the folks in custody are, um, common areas, common bathroom use areas. Um, so that may also be another challenge, just for hygiene purposes. Um, and we, you know, we of course wanna make sure that if we're providing those products that, um, people who need them can clean them appropriately so that they can stay safe and healthy while they are using, um, those products. So, um, as the Chief of Staff said, it's not a full discussion we've had at this point just because this is the first time it's being brought to us. But there certainly would be some barriers, um, with kind of maintaining the hygiene of those products.
Thank you.
People who wanna use them.
I can understand that. Um, but, and with existing products that are made available to, to, um, individuals, like you mentioned, pads and tampons, what are some of the steps that are taken to ensure hygiene in those instances?
Ensure hygiene, so products are separately contained in bins in the A-stations in those housing areas. Um, they're packaged and then they're handed out. So, that's how, they're, they're coming in boxes, they're unboxed, they're put in, into the bins, in the intakes, et cetera. Um, but they are packaged, obviously, um, in their packaging when they're going out and distributed to our people in custody.
Yeah, how do they dispose of it?
Disposal?
In a way that is hygienic?
We would have to get back to you on that.
Okay, so I'm just trying to, a- and it, they are different, they are different products, 100%. Um, but I'm just trying to see if, if what you're raising about hygiene with the menstrual cups is starkly different than what's accessible with existing products? Um, and if that's an area for improvement as well. But I think, um, however, you all can continue to engage on that conversation is certainly helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I wanna move back to Department of Education again for, um, a few questions. Also, I just wa- wanted to take a second to shout out the, the Brooklyn Girl Scout troops because, um, as some of you may know, between 2018 and 2020, Brooklyn Girl Scout troops identified several issues at schools, including four out of 23 not meeting the standards of providing both sanitary bins in each stall and free menstrual products in the restrooms. Um, and fourth and fifth graders who are not included in that, that local law ID4 of 2016. Um, but I just wanna say like how cool is that, that young folks put together this study and collected the data and, and identified a, a gap? Um, but it, it's also very clear that there still exists a, a gap. And so, you know, you gotta work together to make sure that we're filling it. Um, I wanted to go back to, uh, some of the testimony around the products being available in girls' bathrooms and single occupancy bathrooms. Um, I know that my colleagues hit on just how critical it is that students know where to find them. Um, and, and certainly I think that, uh, it would be especially important for, um, you know, gender expansive folks, um, trans students, for example, to know where to find these products, especially because they may be using certain bathrooms over others. Um, so, can you talk to me a little bit about how non-female identifying individuals um, who require these products are identified? And, um, describe how a trans or a non-binary individual, for example, is supposed to access these, these products? Uh, and that's also a question that expands to DOC as well. So, I would love to hear you weigh in on that. And then also shelters. I haven't asked any questions around our shelters yet, but I, but I would like to. Um, and, uh, and how do you ensure equitable distribution of, of products to non-female identifying, um, individuals?
So, I think, um, I would need to talk with DSF to see what the rationale So I think I would need to talk with DSF to see what the rationale was, how they, and how they rolled this out in terms of deciding on girls' bathrooms and single occupancy bathrooms theoretically? That the thinking was that that's, is that right? That's how they would?
Sure, so as I mentioned, the single occupancy restrooms are actually designated as gender neutral. And those students who are, that want to use those restrooms would have those products available in those spaces.
Well, my question to you is, is if there is a trans male student who wants to use the boys' bathroom, how does that trans male student, for example, know where to access period products and get them?
That question, I apologize, I do not have an answer for, but we can get back to you with what the policy is on that.
Okay. I mean, I think that, again, I just think some of the, and I just think some of the lack of answers speaks to sort of how gender expansive folks, trans folks are not being centered in these policies, and they should be because it guarantees access to everybody. I would move over to DOC to answer the same questions.
Sure, thank you, and it's an important question. So for DOC, when transgender, gender non-binary, or gender expansive folks, intersex folks are coming into custody, they are, our LGBTQ Fares staff meet with them, and they do have an intake form. And on that intake form, one of the questions that they can ask, or a box that the person in custody can check off is whether they do need menstrual products. And so for those individuals who may be housed in a male facility, we would potentially know who those individuals are, but if we don't and they do end up needing them, they have several options. They can ask if they're comfortable, the staff on the housing area. If they're not, they can get ahold of our LGBTQ plus staff in many different ways, discreetly or by asking for them, as well as pre-ass staff and program staff. And they all have that information readily available to them in so much that if someone asks for those products, the LGBTQ plus staff keep those products in their office in the male facilities, and so they can distribute them. If they're not available in the facility, there's many other folks that they can get ahold of within the facility, again, whether it's program staff or uniformed staff to go and get those products and bring them to the person discreetly should they need them.
Thank you. And can anybody speak to what the case is in the shelter system?
Sure, I'm happy to speak to that. So the city agencies that oversee shelters take very seriously their legal obligations to provide products and uphold the dignity of their clients, and menstrual products are available in the shelter setting. As I mentioned in my testimony, they're available in different kinds of shelters. And the agencies, DHS, DSS, HRA, they work in partnership with DCAS and the human services providers that they work with to make sure that those products are in those sites. And as I also mentioned in testimony, they're available, depending on the specific shelter, in different places. So some shelters have them available, for example, at the front desk. Other shelters have them in pantry areas where there are other kinds of products that are also made available.
And are they just as readily available in our respite centers or any of the locations that are housing newly arrived asylum seekers?
Absolutely. So menstrual products are available at the Humanitarian Emergency Response and Relief Centers, the HERCS, which are managed by New York City Health and Hospitals. Those products are available alongside other kinds of personal hygiene products in supply rooms on site. And then sanitary pads are available in the respite centers, which are run by New York City Emergency Management as well.
And that was going to be my follow-up question in terms of what those products are. So there are some disparities? You're saying some locations have both pads and tampons, and some just have pads, or?
So that's something I would have to follow up and get back to. My understanding is that menstrual products, is that menstrual products, I believe that means both pads and tampons are available in HERCS. I need to follow up about what exactly is available in the respite centers.
Thank you. So a question I have for, a question I have for essentially everybody, because I've heard different things about the quality of products available at the different sites, are, you know, what are the considerations that were made in determining the quality of products? And just to give some examples from multiple reports that we've gotten, some made by students who were provided with inappropriately adult-sized products, for example, some by incarcerated individuals who have received pads more suitable for wounds than menstruation, and some by shelter clients who have used, have had to use multiple products at once in order to prevent leakage. And so there's been real concern about a lack of quality or poor quality of the free period products. Has any been, anything been done to rectify these issues?
Well, I can speak first and then defer to my colleagues for more specific answers. So in terms of the types of products and the variety of products, that is something that we are actively looking into about what the agencies are providing and how we can provide more variety to meet more New Yorkers' needs. So we are looking at developing new product specifications that can guide purchasing in the future to provide more variety so that people, clients are receiving products that are aligned with their needs or more aligned, for example, with their preferences, their age, et cetera.
And I think, if I may, that it's not just a question of being provided with more variety, but raising the floor and making sure that at the most basic level that the quality, the quality of the products are good enough to serve their function. Would the other agencies also be able to answer that, please?
Sure, so it was actually when we first rolled this program out many years ago, it was with partnership of the council. We did a pilot program in Council District 21 and got feedback through a survey of the principals for the products that we had provided and got positive feedback. But since then-
From the principals, not the students?
We wouldn't reach out directly to the students. We would expect that the principals would have gotten that information from the students.
So I'm sorry, but just to be, like, do you know for a fact that the principals were giving feedback based on engaging students? Or whether the principal looked at the products and said, hey, I think these are fine?
Sure, so that was the intent. But my point is, we had sent that survey to the principals to get that feedback from the students. But our information was from the principals.
Okay, do you know that that's what happened? I guess I would just like more detail. You know, when you sent this out to the principals, did it specifically say, hey, what you're required to do is survey your students to find out what they think? Or was it just a, like, hey, tell us what you think?
No, excellent question, and I can get back to you with that information. But I will say that we have definitely heard the concerns about both quality and variety of products that are being provided. And as was mentioned by my colleague, we're actively engaged with the Menstrual Equity Group to have those conversations and to see what else we could do.
Yeah, because I will tell you, students will tell you. I mean, students are probably one of the most active participants in our participatory budget processes. Students, when we did, at least in my district, an education town hall, students came in and were talking exactly about that. Not a single parent mentioned, you know, some of these things, but it was students that were bringing them up, talking about their experiences. And so if it's not coming directly from students, there's definitely a gap.
Sure, I can tell you the best part of my job is actually engaging with the students.
I'm sure.
The issues for me, because I know I'm going to get straight feedback, that's for sure.
That's right. And DOC, please?
Sure, so our people in custody do have the ability to make complaints, and so we pulled our complaint history just for calendar 23. We had five complaints that were in the categories of supply. There was a complaint regarding inappropriate search that must have intersected with some menstrual products, a lack of information, a mandated service, and then another jurisdictional complaint. Every complaint is looked into by our Office of Constituent Grievance Services and followed up on. Separate to that, I think, just in terms of our supply, like I'd already gone through what we have currently available, certainly variety, I think, is important. Every human being is a different, unique individual. So all the different reasons why, you know, difference and options matter, I think, are important. So our current level of options is not just one or two. We have a couple, more than two. But I think certainly it's a great point, and so we'll be happy to look into that further as well.
And I want to stick with y'all at DOC for a moment. There was an April 20th, 2017 New York Times article reported on issues related to product quality and barriers to access. You talked about it a little bit more broadly, but can you go into a bit more detail on the guidance that both jails and, if you can speak to police stations or anywhere where a person might be in custody with regard to period of products? Like, where do those guidances live? What do they include? Like, what are the specific directives that employees are given?
I did it again. Okay, so I don't know specific guidance per se, whether it's any of our policies or directives. I do know that in the intake, we say two are available per PIC. However, there's buckets of them there. So if you need more, you can certainly get more. And I'm going to ask Chelsea to comment as well, she has more information.
And I certainly, I want to give Chelsea the opportunity to comment, but I will say that I have concerns about a policy that's like, in writing, what's memorialized is two per person incarcerated, which is not enough product, obviously. But we give as needed rather than codifying or memorializing a policy that makes sure a person's need is met and is not, you know, reliant on the common sense of the person that's charged with their custody or the, I don't even want to say generosity because it shouldn't take generosity to be able to access these products. But, you know, like, why is that? Why is it that what's written is two, but then sort of the unwritten, unspoken policy is, but if they need more? I just think that that, it doesn't make sense to me. So I'm wondering if you can make sense of it.
Yeah, I would just clarify that the number two, kind of that quantity, is what we are directly providing immediately upon intake to anyone. So that's just to make sure that everyone has some immediately, more than one, you know, some accessible number. And then if you need more beyond that, you can ask. And then again, as we discussed, once you're in the housing area, people are taking those freely. So we're not limiting the number of products that we're distributing to them or giving out to them because we're not kind of just giving them to them piecemeal. That specific number was just, let's get, make sure people have something immediately, and then they can continue to ask or grab from there is the answer.
And for a bit more clarity, when you say that an incarcerated individual can take them freely, are they available somewhere they can grab? Or they have to be requested by a, to a corrections officer or some other DOC employee to get those?
Okay, so right now, if you walk in intake, and I think, like you said, you'd been in, right, councilmember, to take a look, there are buckets of pads right now in sight for the officers to distribute, but they're also propped up and available with each cell. They're in the clinics, in the nursery, the infirmary. But they're also in the housing area inside our A station. And then through access, you just make a request, and then that A station officer is just passing it through to the people in custody who are asking. In some housing areas, they are outside in the housing area.
Base station is the bubble, yeah?
The bubble, yeah.
Okay, so they would have to, so if they are not in the infirmary, actively in the infirmary, or they're not in a certain center or something like that, in order, and they're just in their housing, they would have to ask the bubble officer to give them products?
It's either that scenario, or they're outside in the housing area and just readily available.
And do we know, like, where that is the case and how that's determined? Why they would be out and readily available in some housing units and in the bubble in other housing units?
And Chelsea, in her preparation, did look into this matter a little, so I'd like you to take that one, Chelsea. Thanks.
Sure, so some of the determination is made kind of on a housing area basis. It can have to do with classification. It can also have to do if certain people are misusing the products in some instances. And so again, they're not being restricted in that. We're restricting the number of people can have, but just sort of monitoring a little more closely if people are misusing them. In some of the A stations, depending on the configuration of it, even if it's kept in the A station, people can kind of reach into a window and still freely grab them. But some of that is made on security determinations and the classification of the individuals in those housing areas.
Okay. Now, obviously, if there is, I'm just going to give an example. There, you're, you're in a, you're in gen pop, and on the floor that you're on, you, there, the officers on shift think that there's some sort of heightened security concern, and so the menstrual products are in the bubble and have to ask, and we have to ask for them, right? What are the consequences, because we've heard these reports before, for a corrections officer who withholds period products from incarcerated individuals? And how can those incarcerated individuals find recourse? Now, I know that you mentioned the constituent sort of complaint process, but what is, what's the disciplinary side of that?
So I'm not aware of that scenario. Certainly, that would, it would be, we'd have an issue with that. I mean, if you need a product, you should have access to it, just like toilet paper. So I don't, I'll look into, we'll take a look if there's a specific example and come back to you in terms of when that happened, what was actually done in terms of discipline.
I almost can't help but say, but it's when you say toilet paper, because there have been times that I've visited that folks did not have access to toilet paper or toothpaste or hygiene products or cleaning supplies or lots of other things. Can you tell me what facilities currently have? I know that you have broadly said they're kind of available everywhere, but if you could be more specific on where these products are available? You know, does it include every male facility, every female facility? Does it include shoe, right? Does it include RMAS? Like, can you just break down all of the different types of housing and whether or not menstrual products are available in those locations? And if it's a particular area, like protective custody or something like that? Like, exactly how it's available and what the process is for accessing?
So throughout Rosy's, we've got all of our buildings supplied within there, the infirmary, the nursery, the intake. That's where you're going to see those supplies. In the courts, and Chelsea can talk a little further on that, separately, if people are ordering them through commissary, they're going to come with a commissary delivery, which is weekly.
Right, and as I spoke to earlier, for those, for the male facilities, we do have them available through the LGBTQ plus staff offices, and so folks can ask for them. Again, right, they have the tablets, so they can discreetly message folks, or they can ask officers or counselors or anyone on the housing area that they encounter if they, if they're not seeing an LGBTQ staff soon and know that they may need them. So they're not available in the housing areas per se in the male facilities, but they are available by request, and they'll bring them, you know, as many as they need, as frequently as they-
And that would be the same process if somebody was in protective custody or was, and found themselves in solitary or?
Yeah, so we don't have solitary confinement, but if someone was in protective custody or one of those other areas, then that would be the same process. They could, they could request in those manners.
I won't argue with you on that one. It's not the focus of this hearing, but thank you. Just give me a moment here and see if, does anybody else have, do you have follow-ups? Okay. Oh, can, can folks also describe some of the outreach efforts to inform eligible individuals to access free menstrual products? You know, during the pandemic, in other languages? How efforts to address the stigma around menstruation is incorporated into those things?
I can start. I think in terms of outreach, every agency is doing what it needs to do to ensure that their clients know about their rights to access products. So whether that's, you know, at intake, in the shelter context, in the school context, I think they're available in the school bathrooms. And as Despina spoke to, like, students are being taught about health education and informed about, you know, they see the dispensers in the bathrooms. We recognize that this is something that we would like to do more of and do a better job about making sure that people know about their right to access products and where those products are available. And we are working to do that now in terms of developing materials and making sure that those materials are going to be in many different languages, all of the city's official languages. And in terms of the shame and stigma, I think we recognize, you know, shame and stigma is rooted in both patriarchy and misogyny, but also in, it can also be sort of addressed with education. And I think that that is something that we are very mindful of, that education helps to do that. And as Despina sort of alluded to, the city is relaunching the Sexual Health Education Task Force that is going to work to ensure that all New York City students are able to access high-quality, comprehensive sexual health education, which includes, obviously, topics of menstruation, but also other kinds of topics beyond just the biological components of health, like healthy relationships, media literacy, gender identity and expression. And so we know that that is going to be part and parcel of this work to reduce shame and stigma and to help more New Yorkers be aware of their rights to access product and where they can find those products available to them.
Thank you.
Sorry. I think I would also want to add that one thing that we have been speaking about is the students having direct access to products in well-stocked dispensers, taking away the need to ask anybody for a product. That's really important. away the need to ask anybody for a product. That's really important. And that's actually, I meet with the deputy commissioner, who heads the Office of School Health, every two weeks. And that's a sort of dual office. It reports to the Department of Health, it reports, reports to the Department of Education. And that is one thing that we spoke about, we're adamant about, is really taking out the need for students to ask, and having free access to the products that they need, taking away some of sort of the embarrassment, the stigma, et cetera.
Thank you. I just have a couple more questions, and then we'll go over to public testimony. I know that we weren't able to get an amount for, you know, what does a single pad or tampon cost the city, because I think you said it varies. Is that correct?
That's correct for varying agencies, but I could just talk on behalf of DCASTs, it comes out to about seven cents a pad.
Seven cents a pad? And you do not purchase tampons?
Currently, we do not purchase tampons.
And how much is spent per agency on period products?
Okay, so our total spending in 2021 was around $27,000, for 2022, $51,000. And then year-to-date for '23, we're at about $39,800.
Thank you. DOE?
Yeah, we will have to get back to you with that information, but we will.
And I guess this question is mostly for DOE, and why I imagine it might be inverse, because we're seeing the census go up on Rikers Island. But I'm curious as to how spending on menstrual products impacted by the pandemic. I know that DCASTs mentioned that it went down. There wasn't a need to order as much, and you were ordering PPE instead. But what's the case for both DOC and DOE?
So, as you're aware, during the pandemic, the first year, schools were closed. And then the second year, we were in hybrids, so schools were not fully occupied. So we did see a decrease. As I mentioned earlier, whatever existing stocks we had, we distributed during the pandemic to the community. But after that, it has continued to grow, our spending, over time.
Yeah, so, for us, of course, our spending is dependent on the population that's there. The population certainly did dip during the pandemic, because of the first wave of releases related to the pandemic. So our spending, we don't have the 2020 numbers with us, but I imagine it would have gone down, the distribution.
Yeah, we have distributions here. So menstrual product department distribution there. So we have in 20, let's say, 2019, it looks like 1,600 regular pads were distributed to facilities, and 267 TamPax tampons. By 2020, that number dropped down to 709 for the pads, and it stayed in between 600, 555, 700 for the next four years. And then the tampons, as we discussed earlier, right, was, it's always been consistently around 250. That would probably be cases. I'd have to come back and let you know what that refers to. And then we had this period of 2021, 2, and 3, where they're on hand, but they weren't being put in the facilities, until they come through commissary.
I am a little bit confused by the fluctuation in purchase. But like, one, I think it's great that at intake, we're finding out whether or not an individual in custody menstruates. Like, I think that that's critical. But I just, you know, I think there needs to, we need to get to a place where we are absolutely eliminating the need for folks to buy menstrual products through commissary, especially when we are talking about vast majority pre-trial detainees, who are quite literally being paid slave wages. And so I didn't, in my mind, there shouldn't be a gap, and folks should be getting access to those things. But I want to thank everybody for your testimony today, for taking all of our questions, and we can, do you guys want to take a bio break, or are you good? And I think we're ready to move on to public, oh, no, actually, I have one more question for all of you. This is probably one of the most important questions before we move to public testimony. I just want to know, like, what are your biggest challenges? And obviously, this is a priority for our council. And so in addition to what are your biggest challenges, what can, what can we do to help?
First of all, thank you for holding this. I've appreciated this experience, and I think it's a great topic, and I think it's absolutely, needs to be routinely done. So, from my perspective, it's been, it's been very positive to be here. Now, in terms of our challenges, again, I think we talked a little bit about, right, making sure we have distribution readily available all the time, and we're tracking that. I think that's probably just our most basic logistical challenge. And I think we'll take a look, but, you know, certainly, we want to talk to you again on the legislation that you've got up, and we've expressed our potential concerns. But I think this is, we're in a good place to continue collaborating with you on this matter.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I also want to thank the committee for the opportunity to talk about this. For me, I think what you have raised here with ensuring that dispensers are stocked and product is available is certainly something that's, we need to work on better, understanding that we want to respect people's privacy. We still want to make sure that we have a way to get the information if there is something that is not available to them. So I think that would be the biggest challenge, and we appreciate your comments on that. And again, if anybody has any specific schools, that's what we're here for, and we're going to address those immediately. I don't know if you have anything yet?
I do. Thank you very much for providing the space for this conversation. As I said before, my health team, my entire office and I are extremely happy that this conversation is happening. Our focus is health education, and I think we continue to work on the provision and the teacher training for quality, quality health education to all our students. We want to make sure that our resources match our initiatives. And so we are really focused on making sure that we're not just doing a rollout of a product. We're really making sure that our students in our schools have the information that they need, in order to access and use the products appropriately. And we continue to have, we continue to plan to, we continue to plan for conversations that need to happen at all levels. You know, teacher instruction, principal information, and reiteration of what they need to be doing at the school level, sort of the working groups and the committees trying to develop, to your point, sort of formalizing requests, and hopefully policies for us to implement in schools. But the cross-agency approach, the cross-DOE approach, is something that will, I believe, and I expect, will harvest the results that we want to see, that we all want to see. So thank you again.
Thank you.
I echo all of my colleagues' comments. Thank you so much for having this hearing and having this conversation. I think we recognize the areas where we would like to do better and exceed our legal obligations. And so we are actively thinking about materials, outreach, how to address, as we've talked about already, like stigma, embarrassment, things like that. I think we recognize we'd like to better understand from our clients that we're serving, you know, what is their experience like, what are their, what are their preferences? I think we recognize we'd like to understand more, and getting some more of that feedback. And then also just addressing what we discussed earlier about variety, quality, et cetera. So we really appreciate this opportunities to speak to you all today about these issues, and appreciate the intent of the legislative package, and look forward to talking about it further.
Thank you. I also want to note for the record that we've been joined virtually by Councilmember Gennaro. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much, members of the administration. We will now hear testimony from the public. I'd like to remind everyone that I will call up individuals and panels, and all testimony will be limited to three minutes. I would like to note that written testimony, which will be, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing, by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. For the first panel, I'd like to call up Jennifer Weiss-Wolff, Marnie Summer, Gabriela, and Gabriela Lopez-Castillo.
Thank you. Good morning, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gabriela Lopez-Castillo, and I'm a recent college graduate. And I've had the honor of being able to work within the menstrual equity community since 2020, as Youth Advisory Council for the organization Period. I wanted to share a little bit of my personal experience growing up with experiencing period poverty, and understanding how important menstrual equity is when I was younger, and seeing how important it is now. When I was in the eighth grade, I discovered that the word "period" had immense power. As a kid in a middle school health class, I quickly noticed that bringing up periods had the power to bring the following: nervous silence, snickers, teasing, and awkward laughter. And not a lot of words can do that, but "period" was able to do so. The mere mention of "periods," or "I'm having a women's issue," would bring beads of sweat to my male gym teacher's forehead, which allowed me to escape class, so I could hide away in a bathroom to deal with what was happening to my body every month. My school didn't provide menstrual products, and my classroom didn't make it a comfortable space to do so, to discuss what all of us were experiencing. And because of that, I never talked about my periods to anyone, not even my mom, for over a year. I would steal pads out of her bathroom, hoping that my mom wouldn't notice, which she did, and I would secretly stockpile them, hiding them in a pencil case during class, so no one would know the real reason why I would leave the classroom for 30 minutes at a time. When I look back at this time, wondering why I did all of that, I know now that it's because I had cemented the stereotype that periods were embarrassing, a bodily function that, for some reason, I had to hide away. The stigmas that surround periods had suddenly ingrained themselves in my 12-year-old mind, and I had no one at the time to reassure me otherwise. Our society has reinforced social taboos and gender stereotypes that stigmatize menstruation as unclean and undignified. This issue has been prevalent for years, and because society has told us that our normal bodily functions are unimportant and shameful, our laws have subsequently reflected that. And that's why we need menstrual equity, and we need these bills to be passed. Menstrual equity, as we all know here, calls for the ending of period stigmas, and pushing for education and access to products for anyone who needs them. Access is vital, and across many demographics, it is our students, our incarcerated persons, and our Black and Brown youth that have come from low-income backgrounds that are most ardently affected by it. Menstruation is a human rights issue, and it is an integral part of sexual and reproductive health and rights. And by passing legislation, like the bills that we've discussed today, we can continue to address it as such. We need these bills to provide increased education, accountability, and to continue to ensure that menstrual products are provided for all who need them. And, so I conclude with this. Although I can't help what I went through when I was 12 years old in middle school, I don't want any young person going through menstruation to ever feel like they can't approach their biological functions with the dignity and respect that they deserve. And I know that we can all agree with that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marnie Summer, Professor of Social Medical Sciences at the Melman School Public Health, Columbia University, and it's an honor to be here today. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to bring an academic program of research to bear on a pressing social issue. In fact, I'll be talking more about the global scope of what you're doing and where this sits. The existing and pending legislation has begun the effort towards menstrual equity and menstrual justice in New York City. However, we have a much longer way to go, and New York has the opportunity to continue to lead the country, and even the world, on these issues. I'll speak to two significant gaps that warrant immediate attention and require only minimal resources. And in fact, some, one of them was addressed today. First, while important to ensure menstrual products are available and easily accessible in elementary, middle, and high schools in New York City for all who need them, optimal use of resources, as we talked about, requires appropriate education about how to use them, and we are sorely wanting on that score. The absence of menstrual health education, guidance, and support as a regular feature of school-based socialization leaves too many young people anxious, confused, and oftentimes fearful of their periods. More significantly, it leaves them unprepared to manage their periods confidently, both in and out of school, poorly equipped to seek healthcare when they experience menstrual pain and/or heavy bleeding, and ill-informed with respect to their lifelong reproductive and menstrual health and well-being. The bill sponsored by Councilmembers Farias, related to education on feminine hygiene products, seeks to address part of this gap. But I think we could do more in terms of providing holistic menstrual education. And I will leave samples. Just, we did research across the US with girls, so have copies for everybody on a guide to puberty and periods, that might well take its spot in school libraries here. We may have a long way to go for education curriculum, but we can put it in the school libraries, similar to books we've done in Africa, Asia, and other parts of the world. Second, important, this legislation ignores the larger pressing need for menstrual-friendly public toilet facilities for New York residents, tourists, and commuters. My team and I are wrapping up a six-city study around the world, Barcelona, Kampala, Uganda, Manila, the Philippines, New York City, Osaka, Japan, and Rio, De Janeiro, Brazil, conducting menstrual-friendly public toilet audits in a business district, a tourist district, a transit station, and a residential Parker Plaza in each city. By menstrual-friendliness, we mean a public toilet that is safe, clean, and accessible, as all those aspects are needed for anyone who menstruates, but also has free or low-cost menstrual products available, and mechanisms for discreet disposal and waste management. There should be appropriate signage, so that an adolescent girl, woman, or anyone else who menstruates doesn't have to frantically search when she feels like it's time to change a pad or tampon. Regrettably, preliminary analysis has New York City falling well behind many of the other cities in low and middle income countries with respect to both supply and quality. A growing chorus of observers has taken note of that disgrace. We could lead the country on this issue if we put our minds to it, becoming a city that champions the gendered needs of those moving around the city.
Thank you. And just very quickly, very excited about the homework. I know I have a reading library in our district office, so we'd be happy to have it up and available to folks. I know Councilmember Farias has a comment.
Yeah, one, first and foremost, thank you to both of you for justifying. I just wanted to say thank you for the book. I also am very excited. We love getting stuff that we can refer back to, and help expand our knowledge base. But also, I wanted to just flag, and if you can take time to look at it and get back to me, Councilmember Menon and myself introduced this past dated Intro 1179, which is related to menstrual products in city bathroom facilities. So that might be hitting your second point. We are constantly and consistently trying to keep adding bills to our menstrual equity package, and answer for some of the larger needs. So if you can look at that language, and let me know what you think of it, I'd relay that back to Councilmember Menon. Thank you.
Thank you. Will do for sure. We're very excited to see it.
Hi, good morning, everybody. I'm actually thrilled to follow both of you. My name's Jennifer Weiss-Wolff. I think I first sat in this room in the spring of 2015, when I brought this issue to the New York City Council, and was thrilled to work then with, then councilmember and finance chair, Elizabeth Ferris-Copeland, to bring to bear the first menstrual equity laws truly in the world, to consider menstruation and menstrual access under this umbrella of menstrual equity for New Yorkers. New York City has been a pioneer, and for that, I am always extremely proud. I sit here a little frustrated today, too, I guess. I appreciated your questioning. I do wish the representatives from the agencies had stayed to hear from some of the citizen experts who are here, because the implementation of these laws over the past, I guess it's seven years now, has been less than full-throated. And I think it would be fair to say that folks who prioritize menstrual equity wouldn't necessarily feel that that is reciprocated by how these laws have been implemented and thought through. So I would urge all of you as councilmembers to really, to make this your priority, to push, to bring this to bear in terms of follow-up with the various, with the various agencies. A menstrual equity working group was referenced several times. None of us advocates are aware of that, are participants in that. And I think that the- And I think that the city agencies would be wise to bring in the expertise of folks who are working on this issue, not just in New York City, but around the country and around the globe. I think also that since, you know, the New York bills, when they were passed into law in 2016, were imperfect. They were novel at the time and they were radical at the time. And again, so much pride that New York City led the way. But in the seven years that have passed, many jurisdictions, including major cities, states, and even at the federal level in this country and globally, have passed laws and have been successful in implementing them in very creative and innovative ways. I would really urge that the city take on some sort of comparative study so that everyone isn't shooting in the dark when they're thinking about what a best practice might look like. Again, there's an advocacy community that is very robust and very willing to participate, as well as leaders, your counterparts, in other cities and state legislatures around the country. The last thing I just want to put in the mix is, and I think it became apparent in some of the answers of the various agency spokespeople, that the pandemic really did change the way we do business, the way we look at our cultural obligations and the ways we can implement the kinds of future we imagined with these bills so that we're not necessarily just leaning on public, not just the public agencies and the facilities themselves, but we're thinking of something more expansive when we think about how to reach people. The school buildings example was a perfect one and the question about what people can bring home with them over the weekend. But anyway, the buzzer rang. I did this free thought, as I tend to do. Happy to always be a resource and answer questions.
Thank you. A couple of things that I'd love to share is, one, I share your disappointment that it appears that the Department of Corrections left. I will say that CGE and, are you a DOE rep back there? Just CGE. So DOE and DOC left, CGE stuck around. Thank you for sticking around. And then the other thing is, would love to chat if there are legislative interventions, if there are policies, if there are budget line items that we could be advocating for, all ears, please email my office. I would love to put our heads together with myself and my legislative director. Happy to be creative and explore especially all of the legislative interventions that might be available to us at the city level to kind of, you know, up the ante on expanding access and equity.
Always. Thank you. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Well, thank you all for, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be Suzanne Herman and Laura Strausfeld.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Awesome. You may begin when ready.
Got to take a look at them. I want to as well. Good morning. Thanks for having me. My name is Suzanne Herman. I'm the Legal Director at Period Law. Period Law is a national nonprofit but based here in New York and we consider ourselves the period equity movement's lawyers, fighting for tax-free, toxin-free, environmentally sustainable menstrual products freely available to everyone who needs them. I won't repeat. Obviously, we are fully in support of this package of bills, especially here today to talk about 1055, which we completely appreciate the recommitment to making sure that the 2016 laws are implemented. I guess I'll just say that I was also a little bit concerned by the seeming surprise of the DOE administrators, seeming to insinuate that they didn't know that dispensers were not working properly or to alert them if a school's dispensers weren't working properly. I know anecdotally, and I know you all know, that it would be easier to name the schools where they are working properly. Right. So we have a student, volunteer of ours, named Alyssa, submitted written testimony, which I'd urge you to read, about an experience of hers where she missed class time and actually another student missed class time because she had to ask her for a pad, an extremely common occurrence and it's something that snowballs really easily. Period Law launched an anecdotal survey amongst high school students this year. Obviously, the school year has just started, so the responses are not really in yet, but so far, one in seven of the students that we surveyed reported having adequate access to menstrual products in their schools. So I think that speaks for itself. Thank you so much for bringing these, again, to attention, especially two years after a work group that, you know, I know things moved a lot slower the last two years than other two years, but every time we bring it up, it can't hurt. So thank you.
Hi there. I'm Laura Strausfeld and I'm the Executive Director of Period Law. And I began working as a lawyer committed to achieving menstrual equity with Jen Weiss-Wolff back in 2016. And we continue as Period Law and Jen continues to ideate great policy, but we are tasked as the only lawyers who are continuing this work to follow up on policies passed and make sure they're enforced. And so I am here really with a couple ideas and concerns and I echo Jen that we would love very much to be part of the work group for menstrual equity. And I also want to bring up another concern that Period Law works on and is very close to home for me is the safety and quality of the period products. And to begin a conversation with you about making the procurement process in New York City an opportunity to provide 100% organic cotton products, which today are the safest available, because these laws are meant to serve the most vulnerable populations in the city: schoolchildren, people who are incarcerated, people who are in shelters, who have exposures to all sorts of environmental hazards. It's vitally important to provide the best quality products. And in written testimony that I will submit online after this hearing, I'll provide some data that we have about some of the pesticides and dioxins and other PFAS and other concerns about the products that are being supplied. I also want to mention that New York State has a green purchasing program that I believe may not be being used or referred to by some of the agencies yet because the date that the DCAS, that the procurement folks who are here today refer to 2016 rules. In April 2022, the Green New York Group added menstrual products and created new specifications that are quite, they're strict, it's not clear, and I can get more information about this, but that the products being supplied will meet those specifications. And again, that's our purview, that's our job as the lawyers for menstrual equity, to make sure those products meet those standards. And we would like your help at getting access to seeing what products are being provided and also to work with you on allowing us to work with the different agencies and report back to you as your partner. So I'd love to be able to speak with you about becoming officially partnered with you to work with the work group and work with the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for y'all's testimony. Do y'all have any? Okay. Thank you so much.
That concludes the in-person portion of our public testimony. We will now move to remote testimony. If you are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and you may begin once the sergeant-at-arms sets the clock and queues you. Currently, we have one person signed up for remote testimony and that is Tiffany Monroe. Tiffany Monroe, you may begin once you are unmuted and the sergeant queues you.
Starting time. My name is Tiffany Jade Monroe, a Black trans woman from Guyana, South America. I am the Trans Justice Coordinator for Caribbean Equality Project, a NYC-based community organization that empowers, advocates for, and represents Afro and Indo-Caribbean, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, gender nonconfirming, and queer immigrants in New York City. The Caribbean Equality Project is here today to stand with Councilmember Amanda Farias, our partner in government, to reaffirm our commitment to health equity in New York City. The proposed period equity package of bills will expand access to period products, care, and dignity to all New Yorkers impacted by the criminal justice system through incarceration. In New York City, many transgender and non-binary people are housed by their sex and not their gender when incarcerated. Having a period already causes transgender, non-binary, and gender expansive people gender dysphoria, but this dysphoria becomes heightened when they access health products labeled as women's health. Transgender, gender nonconfirming, and gender expansive people with menstruating bodies can feel alienated when accessing period products categorized as women's products and may even avoid purchasing them altogether. Jennifer Weiss, who boasts under our period equity, which advocates for affordable, accessible menstruation products, said, "Anyone who menstruates needs to be a part of the discussion and decision-making about their own health and well-being. Period equity is gender equity, women's rights, human rights, LGBTQ+ and racial justice health issues." This package of bills will provide additional information on period products and menstrual hygiene products to students, expand access to free menstrual products to students in elementary schools, and require the New York City Department of Education to report on the distribution of menstrual products in schools. We call the New York City Council to ensure migrants, asylum seekers, and our homeless population also have access to period products. Homeless transgender men face barriers when accessing period products at shelters. Women's shelters, if they can, will offer the products, while men's shelters will likely have little to no option for those who menstruate. We applaud the Women's Caucus for advancing legislation to affirm all New Yorkers who have been historically disproportionately impacted by police violence and false arrests, including Black trans people, sex workers, immigrants, LGBTQ+ people, and even protesters. Period equity is health equity. We must protect the health and safety of all bodies who experience a period, especially many trans and non-binary people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tiffany. It is always good to see you, even virtually. And I want to thank you for, you know, uplifting the need for gender expansive and inclusive language as well as access in our correctional facilities, free access in our correctional facility. So thank you for testifying.
Thank you. If there's anyone present in the room or on Zoom that hasn't had the opportunity to testify, please raise your hand. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank all of the staff present here today and also the folks that work in the background for helping prepare for and execute this hearing. I want to thank everybody for testifying. I think, you know, a couple of things we do know. Access, there is a gap in access and although we have been very clear with what our ideal is or sort of the standard we have set for ourselves, we have not yet met it. And so we have a lot of work to do here. And then the last point is just echoing some of the testimony, saying that, you know, we were leading the way back in 2016 and there really is an opportunity here for us to lead. Again, there's a lot more that we could be doing. So looking forward to reviewing all of the written testimony and coming back and continuing to strive for better. So thank you, everybody.